All right, I just started the recording. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Just so everyone's aware, this meeting is being recorded and will be available on YouTube and other streaming services after the meeting. Just as a courtesy, please mute your microphone if you're not speaking. If you're calling via telephone instead of using the Zoom app, you can, you're aligned with pressing star six. And you press star six again to unmute it. And just a reminder for, yeah, the board members, if we do any votes tonight, we do have to do a roll call vote when we're doing a telemeeting. So if it works for my side, I will happily do the roll call for you when we do those.
Well, thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, and hopefully we'll be. I'm gonna, if I look rude, I'm just looking at my phone in case the two board members who aren't here like text me and say they're having a problem or whatever. But right now, it looks as if we have, for the Board of Ed members, myself, Mark Doyle, Katina Caban Owen, Tracy Lambert, Jaime Gomez, Mary Galucci, and Paula Haney. Is there anybody I'm missing from the Board of Ed? Okay. Jaime, you need to mute your line if, thank you. Um, so first order of business tonight is public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, I'm hearing nobody stepping forward. I just want to make sure minutes are being taken for tonight's meeting. Is somebody taking minutes?
This is Janet, I'm recording the minutes.
Okay, I wasn't sure that you were on. Okay, thank you. Um, so the first item is approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion for the March 11th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
So moved by Mark. I need a second.
Second by Mary Galucci.
Second by Mary. And should we do these all together? Oh, you're starting a screen. Okay, so now we just go ahead and we vote? So just click. Or do we click?
No, it's not that, it's not that, not that advanced.
That would be good if it was.
It will, work on that for next time. If you guys want to take them all together, that's fine. I'll put that back up afterwards.
Do people want to take them all together?
I would have meant the emotion to do them all at the same time.
I agree.
You agree to that?
Yes, Mary.
So Mark and Mary have made a motion to approve the March 11th meetings, the March 19th, I mean, minutes, the March 11th, March 19th and March 30th minutes. So that's, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen. Katina.
Hi.
Has Ms. Stonic joined? Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
I'm abstaining.
Has Ms. Ray joined yet? Don't believe so. Ms. Haney. Paula.
Well, you have to unmute.
Well.
Well.
Okay.
And Lynn.
Uh, aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, now we're on to the superintendent's reports. And I'm gonna call on. Paula Haney just texted me, by the way, and said she doesn't think her mic is working, so she's going to call in instead. Okay, so I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Tracy Youngberg, our acting superintendent, to fill us in. There's been a lot going on.
It sure is. Hi, everybody. I want to start off with some positive thoughts and a little bit of gratitude. As everyone probably knows, maybe not counting, but today was the 26th day of our school closure. It's been a long 26 days. I think no one would argue with that. The staff has been absolutely amazing. And little by little, we keep hearing stories of our students being absolutely amazing, showing their resilience and just being little heroes through this whole thing. So a shout out to the Wyndham Public School staff members and students, and then, of course, to the families that are sort of holding this all together at home. This is like the strangest thing, I think, anyone, you know, anyone who's worked in a school system, this is the strangest thing that could possibly happen, that you're asked to run a school while the kids aren't with you. It's just, it's so bizarre. I also want to shout out, just in general, to let you all know that I have been involved in almost all of the weekly COVID-19. It's the town response team. It's run by Jim Rivers, the town manager, and Mike Locata, the fire marshal. And I have just been so incredibly impressed with the way that team works. They're just incredibly compassionate and dedicated. And everyone is working together to sort of make sure that everything in the community is taken care of and everyone in the community is taken care of. So I just wanted to start off by saying, I think people should be really proud about living here and working here. This is a pretty cool place to be. And I know that our kids are watching, so I just want to shout out and say, thank you to everyone who's doing all the work to sort of keep things together, both in the school system and in the community at large. So it feels good. It feels good to be a part of a team, right? Like, I just, I wanted to make sure everybody knows that. The next thing before I jump into the updates that I've already shared with the board, I want to make sure that we recognize Andrew Lambert and Alyssa Dupont. They were our seniors who were named as the Connecticut Association of Schools Scholar-Athletes. And those of you who know, all right, I see Lynn, I see thumbs up on the screen there. Congratulations, Tracy, and it's a proud mama moment. Those of you who know, I, you know, I played sports in college, so being an athlete's a really important thing to me. And the kids that can get the job done on the field and in the classroom, to me always, you know, I'm always impressed. Usually, this comes with a big recognition at the aqua turf. Unfortunately, that's probably not going to happen this year, which is really sad. But congratulations to Andrew Lambert and Alyssa Dupont for being named Scholar-Athletes. Impressive recognition. All right, moving on to my report. Basically, the report that I sent out on Friday, sort of a summary of it, are all the things that are currently going on with the school system, trying to determine where we are from a fiscal standpoint. So we're responding to the fact that we know our food service department, who are doing an amazing job of serving nearly 2,000 meals every day to students in Wyndham. But we know that they're running a weekly deficit of about $15,000. So the first bullet in my report to the board was letting you know that we've let the town manager know that we would like to apply for the FEMA public assistance so that we don't end up with a huge deficit in that department because they're doing good work. And it's necessary work. So, and we know that they're entitled to that public assistance. They're, they meet the requirements, so we're going to apply for that, for that relief. I've also let the board know that the Connecticut State Department of Ed has let us know that we should be receiving funds through the Federal Cares Act. They haven't identified exactly how much. But we're waiting on that. And it's money that has, will be allowed for us to apply to our response to this, to the school closures and all the things that are happening right now. And although it's hard to predict what our kids are going to need when they get back, the reality is, we were trying, we're always trying in Wyndham to close those achievement gaps and support kids who are living in poverty. And the 26 full days of school, not to mention the weekends, that these kids have been away from us are not going to make those gaps any smaller. And of course, they're going to be potentially increasing their anxiety, you know, their feelings of uncertainty. And just, we know that there's going to be money that we are going to need to invest in getting them back up to speed from an academic and a social emotional standpoint and a behavioral standpoint. So it's good to know that the state is saying that there's money coming to help support that. We've also received notification from the State Department of Ed that there are some waivers to federal grants that will allow us to spend money in different ways than we've ever been allowed before, just so we can respond to the pandemic and also to potentially carry monies over into next year, which is good because we're spending differently than we normally would at the close of the school year. We have expenses that we didn't have before. And we have some places where we're not spending money that we would. So it's good to have the ability to carry money over for when the kids do come back to us. I let the board know that we have received notification that they will indeed be shipping the, you have a question? I saw.
No, she was waving.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she was trying to stop me. It's such a strange format, this whole Hollywood Squares thing. But we received notification that they will be shipping the high school laptops. We have been approved to receive one laptop for every high school student. Neil knows the exact number. I think it's 6:30 and change, right, Neil? I see Brendan too shaking his head. So that actually allowed us.
33?
6:33.
33.
Perfect.
Awesome.
That has actually allowed us to rethink our whole plan in terms of one-to-one devices, to make sure we can get a device in the hands of every sixth through 12th grader and then work our way backwards down the grade levels. So I gave you the update on that. The state is also donating school resource packs, school packs. We haven't seen them yet, which is kind of odd. But I understand they're going to be leveled books appropriate for each grade level, and they can go home as potential resources for the students over the summer. I also let the board know that we are still trying to figure out the bus contracts and negotiate those contracts. Gave you some details about not making progress with one of the bus companies that offers us transportation. And it sounds like we're in better shape with EastCon than we are with M&amp;J. So more details to come on that. I then gave the board an update on the changes we're making to the grading. We have taken the commissioner's recommendations and moved to a pass/fail option for the second semester. And we've also decided, although not in this packet, but we've decided that the, oh, no, I think I did include it in the packet, that the elementary schools will be using a narrative summary of the kids' performance at the end of the school year versus the standard-based report card, because it would really be difficult for us to grade them on standards in this current format. I thought that we might have to have a discussion about how the grading policy that we've adopted impacts the board, the current policies in place. But when I started to do my research on the board policies, the only places where I thought we were going to have an issue is when we use or don't use the grading for the semester in the calculations of class rank and GPA. But the way the current policy is written, we haven't, we won't need to change anything. So there won't need to be any policy changes. It basically says that pass/fail courses are not calculated into the rank, into the class rank. So that's what we had already decided we were going to do, so we don't have to change the policy. And we're not alone. I guess a couple of the districts discovered that in the last few days, that they didn't need to get board approval because it wasn't changing any specific policies.
Excuse me, we have a question from Tracy Lambert.
Sure.
Dr. Youngberg, a couple junior parents and students have contacted me asking that class rank will be determined at the mid of this past, this current school year? Or if it means that they will wait with the pass/fail because they don't, it doesn't count, until next January, as this class did, to determine class rank?
So Neil, are you able to answer that since you were leading the class rank committee there and all that work? Or do you want us to answer it later?
I would prefer to have a conversation first, because like any of these, what I learned in looking into class rank recently, there's like every decision has different pros and cons. So it's a great question. We can follow up and by the next meeting have an answer.
Okay, just, students have asked me and I want to be. They're like, this spring is pass/fail and that counts towards your graduation credits, but not towards your GPA. That's already been determined, class rank? Or you have till next January after midterms to determine class rank? It's been an honest question that have come from students and parents.
It's a great question.
It's a very good question. Well, we'll have an answer by next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Tracy.
No worries. While we're, while we have a break, are there questions? Do you want to continue and finish, Dr. Youngberg? Or do you want to just?
I really only had.
Last questions.
I only had one other bullet to share from my update, and that was about the Head Start Home Base Program and our inability to get EastCon to give us any more money to help run it. So we have, we are not going to be moving forward in 2021 with the Home Based, the Early Start Home Base Program. I want to assure everyone on the board that that is not a program that we're mandated to provide. And it has been costing the district a great deal of money. And EastCon is currently looking for another agency to pick, to pick up the program. It impacts five employees in the district. We are hoping that EastCon will hire them. And we already have potential placements for at least a few of them if EastCon doesn't hire them. So I gave you the details in the packet. We really wanted EastCon to be able to come through for us and maybe throw a little more money our way, because carrying the benefits on all these employees, even though the grant covers their salaries, has been very costly. So, and as you know, we're in a position where we have to count every penny. So we did make that decision moving forward for 2021. And the last thing is just that we're, you know, focused on getting prepared for the public hearings for the Board of Finance on May 6th and 13th and collecting testimony.
I have a question.
Sure, go right ahead, Jaime.
Okay, regarding the buses, the bus contract, bus contract, aren't they allowed to receive a care funding? You know, as they, are they, I think they're considered small businesses. So, I mean, if they are applying, then we don't have to pay them because they will be getting the money, you know, that we will pay. So maybe.
We've actually been given a directive to pay them, but there's some leeway in how much we pay them, in the way the director, the directive's been given through the executive order. We have to pay them. It's just a question of how much.
No, but if they get the money, if they apply for that money, they, you know, including the money that we paid as part of their funding, the care funding, then we shouldn't be able to, you know, we shouldn't have to pay them because they're being paid.
I can ask, I can ask about that. Get some clarification on that to verify. I know what you're saying. They'd be getting.
They may double the debt.
Right, unjustly enriched, I think the attorneys call it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
But to be, but to be clear, right now, you know, unless we find out a positive answer to that question, Jaime, right now, we are doing what the executive order requires us to do, which is pay them something. What we're trying to do is negotiate what that something is, correct?
And for how long?
Yeah, I do understand that. I just wonder, you know, if they are applying for money.
Did somebody ask a question for how long? Did I hear somebody say that?
That, yeah, that was me, Lisa Dunick.
What was your question?
For how.
Repeat it again.
Yeah, for how long? We don't know yet, correct?
Well, we're supposed to be trying to figure out how to negotiate, at least through the May 20th date, that the governor has told us our schools will be closed. And then depending on what the decision is from there, that would determine what the, how much longer. The question is, we're paying them for services that are not being delivered, right? But we've been given the directive, we have to pay something. It's just trying to negotiate what that something is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Are there any other questions for the acting superintendent, based upon her report from the board members? Yes, Katina? You need to unmute.
I forget. I want to say I'm extremely sad that the five women who are, were parent visitors are no going to be with us in that position. Those women have made great inroads to families that are very hard to reach and making also inroads for keeping kids safe. I have been involved with a few of them as late as Lucia's death recently in December. So I just want to say that I'm really sad that EastCon is not providing the difference so we can keep the program with us, because they, they work hand in hand with preschool and it's a great loss for the families.
And I know Aleke Kerriganis, the director of WCC, is really trying to make sure we can keep those staff members on in some capacity for just that reason. We understand their contributions for sure. Thanks, Katina.
Are there any other questions?
I do, Lisa Dunick.
Yes, go ahead, Lisa.
Now, with the governor saying that there's a possibility of everything opening up for May 20th, are we considering that for our schools?
Well, the governor told the school systems that they couldn't open any sooner than May 20th. We haven't gotten any further guidance after May 20th. We're going to do what the governor tells us we can do, I guess. Where, the superintendents keep asking the commissioner to please get a decision from the governor about what's happening next, because we're all faced with having to have a plan if we don't open and a plan if we do open. And it's just, it's a lot of work to have two plans going at the same time. So we're going to do, I guess, whatever the experts tell us is okay for us to do. I know the governor won't pull the trigger to open schools unless he's gotten the okay from the Department of Public Health and they've met the criteria of the reopening guidelines. So I feel confident that when the governor says we can reopen, that we would be able to reopen.
Even if it's for a month, that would be, yeah?
Well, I mean, I guess there's probably advantages and disadvantages. I know there's probably a lot of families that if, if we're given the okay to open, are going to want us to open and get their kids back to school. It's not going to be easy to come back to school for three or four weeks.
Right.
But, you know, if, if we're given the go. My guess is that all of the superintendents in the region are trying to stick together and make decisions together. So I suspect that the only way that wouldn't happen is if the region decides they're not going to open. But everyone really wants their kids back. We all feel very much out of control not having our kids with us. And we know for Wyndham, being in the four walls of the school system is really what sort of levels the playing field. When they're home, we can't provide supports that we can on a regular basis. So we need them back in school.
We do, we really do.
Agreed. And they need to be there.
Go ahead, Tracy Lambert.
I just jokingly want to remind Dr. Youngberg, the other Tracy, that a third of your board has high school seniors this year.
I know, I have a junior and my heart's broken. I, I totally feel your pain. I, I know, we want those kids back. I, I get it.
Even if it's not feasible to return to high school, something for graduation. And I know you guys have been looking at things. You communicated that to me. I don't know what, you know, the outcome is of that. And I read the packet, but there's been a lot going on in my life lately. So I'm not, I'm not saying I remember everything, but some things.
We're basically, we're basically trying to have a complete virtual plan, virtual graduation ceremony in the event we're not allowed to have people together, which even if we open, is still highly likely that that's going to be the case. They're not going to let us put 500 or 700 people together in one room. So we really are trying to come up with some virtual celebration of our seniors and also of our promotion ceremonies for the fifth and eighth grade. Everyone has these milestones that the kids and their families wait to celebrate. So we're, we're, we, in fact, the high school staff went to a virtual PD today about virtual graduation ceremonies. So we're trying to figure out a plan. And we do understand that, that you want to see your kids, you know, go through this. It's, it's truly a milestone, right? You waited a long time and you put up with a lot of stuff along the way. So I totally get it from a mama standpoint, completely.
Well, and we've told our kids, you know, like, get through the first 11 and a half years. And that, after that year is so much fun. And you spend time with your fam, with your friends and stuff like that. And, you know, they're looking at me going, you lied, woman.
Yes, it's so true. They really did lose out.
Yeah. Ida, you have a question?
Yes.
Ida, go ahead.
I just want to know, I just want to say hello to everyone. How's everybody doing? This has been quite the ordeal. But, you know, we're healthy, so we'll, we'll take that as a blessing. But now, as far as high school graduation, what does this virtual graduation, what would that look like?
Well, I don't have all the details. Like I said, they just went to the meeting today, but it's basically a celebration that could be televised or streamed live. It would give us a chance to acknowledge the kids through photographs, through slides, that they basically create a way to see all of them. We could put it on a local access channel for those that don't have the ability to log into like a Facebook Live or something like that. And we go through the process, the graduation ceremony virtually. So there's the valedictorian, salutatorian gives speeches, the principal, the superintendent can give speeches, you can do the pledge of allegiance, you can do all the things. You're just not physically together in the, you know, inside the auditorium or whatever space you graduated. So I know it's not the same, but it's, you know, it's what we're planning for in the event we can't be, bring everyone together.
Better than nothing.
Absolutely.
Sure. And we are working to get them their caps and gowns mailed to your homes. So we are, we're working on that.
Okay.
So that they can have their caps and time to decorate and do all the things that they would normally do if this was a normal year.
And they still get to spend the time with their family, so, yeah.
Now, would they be able to get pictures taken, like they usually do?
I can look into that. It would still have to be something done on an individual basis because we couldn't bring them together in groups. So, but.
Right.
Let me find out about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will just say that there are a lot of photographers who are not doing.
I know.
Certain types of work these days, so, you know.
And I'm a photographer.
What'd you say, Case?
I'll volunteer and I'm a photographer.
That's true. She's a professional photographer.
You could take pictures with a mask on and gloves, right?
I can do whatever you need me to do. I've done prom pictures for the last five years. I want to make it as robust as I can for our students, not just.
That's wonderful, wonderful. Okay, so it's, yes, Katina? Go ahead. You need to unmute yourself, Katina.
Sorry. I, Tracy, I'll be happy to help you. I'm an amateur photographer, so need an assistant, I'll be there.
Thank you, everybody. I think there are a lot of creative minds here and people who have skills that we could take advantage of. So once the team that's working on this gets a chance to figure things out, I think we should make sure we let the board members, especially the ones with seniors, figure out ways to contribute.
Absolutely.
To that successful, whatever it is. Okay, any other questions? I have a question about the donated.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, my audio cut out there for a second. It looks like Tracy Lambert used the hand raise feature within Zoom. I don't know if you can see that on your end.
No, I didn't see it.
Wait, she's, oh.
She's here.
It was a while ago.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah. So I mean, actually physically, and so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question about the computers. If, at, we didn't know a couple of weeks ago that we were definitely going to get X amount of computers. Does that impact our budget request for next year? Because we had 400 and some odd thousand dollars in the budget for Chromebooks.
Sure.
And we could wait and answer it during the budget discussion, but I just thought I'd ask.
As I put in the notes for the board, I think it does have an impact. We obviously have to keep money in the, in the IT budget to do maintenance. And I have my IT guy who's moderating, who can give specifics. But it was for the purchase of Chromebooks and then obviously infrastructure and maintenance and all that. I, I think this donation of laptops puts us in a position where we could probably pull off the things we'd hoped to do with half of what we originally requested comfortably. And I could, Brendan, I don't know if you want to, if you want to jump in there. And I could, Brendan, I don't know if you want to, if you want to jump in there and give any specifics. I know you, I know you're really good at providing budgets down to the bare, like literally. He gives me budgets and he says, this is what we need if we're going to do 100% of this, 50% of this, 25% of this, 15% of this. He literally breaks it down to pennies because that's what's happened to his budget every single year.
Absolutely.
If we could get half of the request, I think we could comfortably do the things we're hoping to do.
Yeah, I, as I say, I don't have those scenarios in front of me. I did rework them when we found out about the laptop donations to see what we could do. I, like I said, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I do remember we could make a, you know, sizable reduction in what we were originally requesting and still come up with the results we wanted.
If you could get us those numbers, that would be terrific.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it will come up in the context of the budget discussion. Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent before we move on to the next items on the agenda?
I have a question.
Yes, Ilda?
I'm sorry, I missed the part where she said, when are we getting these laptops for the high school?
So the the first wave is supposed to start relatively soon, but I think they're all supposed to arrive to us by the summertime, July, something.
All right, so now, the seniors this year, do they get a laptop too? Or?
Go ahead. Neil, you want to jump in?
Yeah, that that this would be for, I'm assuming by the time we get them, like the people that already have laptops to keep those. And then not keep them, they would return them. But we would be getting 40% in May, I believe. And then the remaining 60%, I think is 10% in June, or 50% in June and 10% in July or flip on that. I know we get 40% of them in May. So that's roughly 200 something laptops that we'll get. But once we get them, you know, we have to follow some rules that they're giving us and everything. But the 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 seniors and all the students that have Chromebooks right now, we wouldn't necessarily be replacing those. We would be setting up for next year, I would imagine. Or maybe we would be, we'd have to talk.
That's awesome.
Okay, so there's not a definitive answer yet, but it doesn't look like things are going to be immediate.
No, but we're just happy to get the email that said they are starting delivery in May. That made us very happy.
Mm hmm. Okay, any other questions before we move on? Okay, we're going to move on. Committee reports, and I'm going to hand it over to Mark Doyle, Finance and Audit Committee.
All right, well, we have the minutes sent out to everybody, so you should have had a chance to read them. And Dr. Youngberg went over quite a bit of what we were going to talk about. I guess I would just highlight the kind of the unknown is the how much money we'll get from FEMA for the lunch. Because at 15,000 a week, that's going to be a drain. And right now, if you looked at the actual numbers, based on what we saw at the last meeting, we're looking at approximately $100,000 deficit for the end of this year. Unless something significant happens with this bus money or something significant happens with the with the lunch money. Is that right, Dr. Youngberg or Rita?
Yes, we, we talked about still anticipating $100,000 from the state for the excess cost, which would bring us down to, you know, 97. And there are some adjustments I still need to make in. I know one of them is the finance director's salary. That's going to, that comforts is going to be reduced. So I don't think it's going to be as high as 100,000, but it could, it could potentially be. We are adjusting encumbrances right now. And I'm going to be doing a projection to ensure that the insurance is going to come in as we expected.
So so the issue could be that we could be still looking at 90,000 or 100,000 deficit, which will not be happy news for the Board of Finance if we have, if that's how it comes out. So we're hoping that some of this other money shows up.
Yeah, I, I, we are hoping, yes.
We're working on it hard.
There's a lot of unknowns with the grants right now, too. We, you know, if we have carryos or if we don't have carryos, you know, we we're looking at everything in the grants and seeing how how much has been spent. So, you know, we could see some there as well.
Okay, and then the only other thing, Lynn, is the approval of the transfers, unless there are particular questions on the on the minutes.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll take care of the transfers under action items. Does anybody have any questions for for Mark? Okay, thank you. School Planning and Design Committee, Tracy Lambert.
With everything that going on, that was, that's going on now, Dawn Tamakos and I decided that there was a lot going on in her end. And she deferred having a meeting until probably May. So we'll probably have a meeting next week or the week after.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Tracy Lambert? Okay, um, Policy Committee, Ilda Rae, anything? Go ahead.
Unfortunately, I do not have anything to share. We have not met since, since we have been distant. So we have, we do have to plan a meeting, though. So maybe next month, Tracy, Ms. Tracy, Ms. Dr. Tracy.
In in May.
Works for me. Just send me some dates and times that work for you and we'll set up a Zoom.
Okay, all right. That's it, the end.
Thank you. Any questions for Ilda? Okay, Executive Committee has the same story, basically. Since we've had the shutdown, we've been having, you know, we've had a couple of board meetings. We have not had many committee meetings. Finance and Audit seems to be the the committee that's been, you know, meeting the most, like the most normally as scheduled and rightly so. Because those are things we need to really keep on top of. But I'm expecting our committee will meet this coming month also. So stay tuned for committee meetings in the month of May. Also, you know, it's been hard. We haven't wanted to put too much pressure on the staff who have been like scrambling to deal with this new reality. And I want to recognize that staff has been doing a remarkable job trying to figure out how to work a school system in this surreal set of circumstances. So, thank you. So, um, discussion items. We've been talking with the Board of Finance. And the Board of Finance had very nicely submitted written questions to us so that Dr. Youngberg and her team and board members who were paying attention to all this had a chance to to put our heads together and come up with responses, which Dr. Youngberg presented to the Board of Finance a little over a week ago. And now the Board of Finance is scheduled to have another meeting tomorrow evening. And Dr. Youngberg and I are definitely going to be video, video, videoed into that meeting. Other people, I think, will have to call in as we were instructed by the Chair of the Board of Finance. And the Board of Finance did make a decision to have two public hearings, virtual public hearings, one on May 6th and one on May 13th at 6:00 P. M., both of them. So I want the committee chairs to note that so that when you schedule any meetings during the month of May, that you try to keep those evenings free so that those of us and the public who want to participate in those hearings can do so. But as people know, there have been questions asked of us about whether or not, if we had known we were going to be in the current circumstance that we're in now, in the COVID-19 reality, which not only is a reality for our school system, but also is a reality for the economy as a whole and for people's incomes across, pretty much across the board. Certainly in a town like Wyndham, a lot of people are are being affected. So the question was put to us in several different ways. Would we want to modify our budget request to the Board of Finance? And or would we have a preference about affirmatively saying we'd rather, we're asking for this instead? Or do we want to let the Board of Finance make that decision for us? And then we are left with whatever the bottom line is that they that they want to put forward and approve. And we, then we could make a decision about how we deal with that as a board and with the staff. There have been a lot of ideas that have been put out on the table by various people. You know, such as, you know, considering consolidating our elementary schools into into one less building, for example. That is a process that the board would have to go through with the superintendent and the staff and the public. That is not something we can, you know, we can make a promise about how much money would be saved by that and what would happen if we did that and what the exact timing of that would be right now, here and now. It is something that has been talked about in the process. We also have had, people make suggestions like, could we go back to the bargaining, bargaining union units and ask them for some, you know, to renegotiate some things? That is always a possibility, but that is something that is likely, more likely done once we know what a budget number is. And we would see, you know, where we could go with that if that is something the board decided it wanted to pursue. So I'm not suggesting we have that, those kinds of discussions tonight. But we do need to have a discussion to give the superintendent and me as the Chair some guidance as we go back to the Board of Finance for discussion and over the, over the next several weeks. So I'm going to open up the floor and ask any board members to weigh in. Now, Mark, go ahead.
Oops, wait a, okay. Yeah, I guess I'm reluctantly considering that we should reduce our request that, given the the nature of the economy and what we're looking at, the likelihood that we're not going to get the 10% increase that we want, the possibility that we may end up in a deficit this year. I would, I would recommend that we go back to the 5.92 that we originally were going to propose until we added back those extra numbers. I just think it, I think, I'm, I'm, I am sort of torn because on the one hand, we should be asking for what the kids need, but on the other hand, 10% at this point is just not a realistic ask for the town or for the for the Board of Finance. So I'm thinking we should go back to the 5.92, the original budget request.
Okay. This is Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm conflicted because we never get an increase that we ask for. And the Board of Finance always determines the bottom line. I, you know, it wouldn't just be this year because that's the nature of the board's whatever, you know. So they have done it repeatedly. They cut our our budget. And over a decade, we have not gotten what we asked for. You know, and it is a shame that we are in a situation right now. But, you know, last year, supposedly the reason for not voting for the budget was something else, something to do with the district leadership and not finances. But people ended up saving that money. So, you know, we can't always shortchange the schools. We have to right-size the budget because it is not the right size. I I just want to say that that's my feeling. And I don't know what the Board of Finance will do, but I don't want to give them a green light to do something that I think is harmful to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Katina?
I I totally understand the financial needs of our community and and our present state regarding the COVID virus. I nevertheless would be, to myself, unethical, not asking for what is needed for the staff and the children in our district. So even if it's perceived as too much, like Mary said, like Mark has said before, we have been underfunded and the school has never been a priority. And I have 26 years of past experience where most of the budgets were not passed the first time, always for some political reason, never for, never for what really the kids need. So it is time that I want us to think that it is time for us to stand and say, this is what's needed and make in this town, the school system, the priority that should be. Because we have been underfunded and neglected for since I can remember being in this town. That's, that's my comment.
Tracy Lambert and then Lisa Dunnick.
Um, I made the recommendation to approve the full 9.7% or whatever it was. And I've been on the Board of Education now for almost 12 years. And we have asked for less than what we've needed every single year at the influence of the former Board of Finance Committee Chair. And we ask for less than we need, and then the Board of Finance cuts it every single year. And that is their prerogative to do so, and they have tough decisions they have to make. And I completely respect that. And whether I was a board member or a chair, I've always respected the decisions they have to make. But if we ask for 5% and they cut it to two and a half, that's 7% less than we need. We ask for 10% and they cut it to two and a half, then they've cut 7% off of our budget. And that's on them when the education budget runs over or when we have other needs that surface because we've asked for what we needed. I think we need to continue to communicate to the community and to the Board of Finance, Town Council, anybody else who needs to listen, that this is what we need to maintain a bare minimum educational opportunity for all of our students. This COVID pandemic has proven to us that we are underfunding technology, underfunding opportunities for our students, underfunding the things that our students need to be competitive with other schools in some kind of situation like this because we don't have enough Chromebooks and we don't have enough laptops. Teachers haven't been as fully vetted on using these platforms as they should be. And we have to say enough is enough. If you want to continue to shortchange our students, that's on you now, not on us for not asking for what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board want to weigh in? Oh, Lisa, you had your hand up next. Go ahead, Lisa.
I, you know, I think it is kind of like a double edged sword. But I have to say, I agree with Mark on this one. I think we should go back to the initial 10% that we went with initially. Because the board's going to cut it and you don't know how much they're going to cut it with. And if we just go back and say, look, this is what we decided. Because this is, we're dealing with something right now that's affecting everybody. People don't have jobs. People are losing a lot more. And it's more than just a political thing. It's more than just, you know, this is something that's affecting our country at a whole. And we need to take that into consideration. So if we go in and say, look, we, we were under budget to begin with, but we took the initiative to make more additional cuts. That may make more of an impact and we may come out ahead by doing that. That's my opinion.
So Mary, I mean, so Lisa, are you, I'm a little unclear. Are you advocating to decrease our request?
I'm saying that we should, we should make the cuts ourselves more. I'm saying that we should, we should make the cuts ourselves more.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's more clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Paula, Jaime, Jaime, go ahead.
Yes, I see, I mean, the problem with us making the cut ourselves, it doesn't guarantee anything because we don't know what they're thinking. They will cut anyway to whatever parameter they think they feel is fine. So I think we start our ground. That's my feeling. We need to ask for what we need because we have never done that. We have always given up to something else. So to me, the 9.7% that Ms. Lambert proposed is, you know, should stand. That's, that's my, that's my think.
Thank you. Now, is there anybody else? Ilda or Paula who wants to say anything? Okay, Paula, I just want to make sure, you know, since we can't see you, that you're not being left behind. Nothing? Okay. And I don't see Ilda. She must have had to step out for a second. Paula?
I'm trying. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. I have had the opportunity to speak to a couple of the Board of Finance. One thing I guess I want to say right up front, I've been on both sides. When, as a Board of Finance member, we have cut, it usually has come as the result of a failed referendum. I don't know as we have historically reduced the budget right off the bat. I think that our failed referendums have been a big reason why the Board of Ed budget has decreased over time. So in saying that, I guess if we can come up with at least some honest attempt at reducing our budget, and, and I mean from our side, if that's a way that we can be creative and reduce that budget, showing good intentions relative to knowing what we need for our kids, but knowing the condition of the community. I think it would be a, a good way to start. I think we would have probably a little bit more agreement from the Board of Finance. I just think if there is a way that we can creatively reduce, I think that's perhaps where we should start.
Thank you, Paula. Ilda, I don't, Ilda, do you want to say anything? Okay. Well, I'm just going to speak as chair and as somebody who had been the chair of the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance has, on a number of occasions, cut the proposed budget put forward by the Board of Ed before bringing it to a referendum. So I don't think the, the argument that you're making, Paula, that the Board has, Board of Finance has only made cuts after a referendum vote. They have made cuts after a referendum vote. But they also, including when I was on the board, made, have had shaved down the original Board of Ed request before bringing it to the voters. So I just, I just want to put that on the table. And I also want to say to folks, it is the Board of, Board of Finance's, you know, authority to cut the bottom line. They can't tell us how to cut our budget. They can't say, we want you to cut it in this area or that area. But they can give us a smaller budget and then we can make the decisions about how we want to deal with it. I am inclined, even though I understand completely the arguments that have been made by, by Paula and Lisa and Mark, I am not inclined to want to ask for less than what we need for the district. And knowing that we could very well end up in a situation where a cut is made to our budget. And then we have to go back and figure out how to deal with that. And we, there are a lot of different tools we have to deal with that. But they will result, a cut, cuts of any kind, no matter how creative we are, I'm afraid to say, will result in staffing cuts to the Board of Ed. Tracy, I see your hand up. Tracy Lambert.
Um, I think that the Board of Ed has proven in the past. And I have to say that I've seen since November, Dr. Youngberg making incredibly creative and interesting decisions financially that have benefited our district. When the budget has become an issue, she inherited a little bit of a challenge. Have to be careful what I say here, but she inherited a little bit of a challenge. She's done some incredibly creative things. And when, when the Board of Finance, it's not an if, when the Board of Finance cuts down to us, it will have that same challenge that I'm sure she'll communicate to us. But saying that we need, and I'm doing this with all respect because Paula, I know you've sat on the Board of Finance as well. Saying that we need to be creative is something we've done every year. Something we did this year in December when we found out that we were definitely operating on the MBR. I think that the leadership in this district currently has the talent and the ability to make that kind of a decision and communicate it to the board and then the public when we make a decision on how to cut our budget. But I think that telling them what we need is vitally important right now. Because if we tell them we need less than what we need, I think that we're shortchanging our decision-making process. But more importantly, the opportunities we give our students. We're talking about building and, you know, renovating the high school and giving different opportunities to our students to be able to grow and be successful with or without college. But we're cutting ourselves off at the knees because we're not going to be able to fund these programs that the students have asked for in the middle, in the middle school level, what they'd like to do when they get to high school. We're going to cut ourselves off at our knees by not giving ourselves the opportunity to give the best opportunities to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak? Jaime, go right ahead.
I also would like to, to convey, you know, the message that we did not come to this decision, to this budget lightly. We discussed it and we were very, very responsible in coming to this conclusion, to this decision. We decided that we really needed to meet the needs of the students first. I am a taxpayer. I don't want to waste money. I don't want to throw away money. I might, you know, what I'm seeking to do is that we invest in what we should invest for the future of the district and the town. Because we've been, at times, considered very irresponsible. All they want to do is spend money and so forth. I pay a lot of taxes too. And any increases taxes, I will do. But we need to, we, I mean, the point is, we have been very, very responsible in coming to this figure. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the board who would like to speak about the budget? So I don't really think we need to bring this to a vote. I wanted to have a conversation with you all. If you would like to vote on it, somebody could make a motion. But at this point, I'm feeling that there is a majority of people on the board who, if we brought it to a vote, the majority of the people on the board, board would vote to keep the budget at the 9.72% request, whatever that exact percentage is, and continue to talk with the Board of Finance in the public hearing process. Does anybody object to that?
No.
No. Okay. Well, we will be on a conversation with the Board of Finance tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock. And then the following two Wednesdays will be public hearings. And I would just say that the board needs to work a little if they want this budget to get people from the public to weigh in in the public process. One of the things I'm concerned about, and I conveyed this to Dr. Youngberg when we were talking last week, is that because we're in a virtual world right now where we can't show up in numbers and where, you know, people can, people can submit emails to the Board of Finance with their opinions about this. And people can speak up at the public hearings, however they're going to be run on May 6th and May 13th, which will be virtual about this. I think we need to make sure that when people are weighing in on the budget, they're making it public. Because there is no way to like, for us to know, like, how many private conversations are being had? I've been on the Board of Finance, how many private conversations are being had? Whether there's pressure from the town side to hold our budget down? You know, there are a lot of things that happen in the budget setting process. And I think that we need to make sure that members of the public know that we support this budget. Or if you have a different point of view, what you feel, what, you know, convey that view. But we want to make sure that there are plenty of other people who came to our Board of Ed meetings leading up to us making the decision to go forward with this, with this number. They need to be speaking up to the Board of Finance now. Because in all likelihood, that's where the decision is going to be made this year. The town manager spoke at the last Board of Finance meeting and said that even if the state reopens, he thinks it's highly unlikely that we would be able to have an in-person budget referendum. So, so we're going to leave it at that then, folks, okay?
Thank you.
And Doug, Larry, I know, I see you've been listening tonight. Thank you very much for listening. Appreciate it very, very much. So year-end plans, this was for a discussion item. And are we talking about closing out the school year virtually? Is that what we're talking about here? Dr. Youngberg?
So I, this might have been, when we originally set up the agenda, it might have been the discussion about the fact that we were going to be planning, you know, for a virtual graduation. I am in the process of working with the principals on identifying the days that the fifth grade and eighth grade will potentially have virtual promotion ceremonies. I should be able to send you those dates at the end of the week in my update. We're just ironing, ironing out a few details. Obviously, just like when they were, those promotion ceremonies were in person, the board members would be invited to them. So if they're virtually, you'll get, you know, multiple invites to the promotion ceremonies who are working on that whole piece. And as soon as we know whether or not we're actually coming back this school year, that would help us figure out what the year end is actually going to look like. You know, whether we're coming back at the end of this year for the summer or next fall. Plans for each of those things? I don't know if anybody has any questions about the year.
Anybody questions? Anything people want to raise? Yes, Mark?
Not so much a question, but I would, I happen to be reading on some internet site as, that's all I do all day. People, the possibility of using the drive-in as a graduation site so that families can stay in their cars and you can project your video on the screens.
So we reached out to them and they don't have permission to do that yet. They have to get permission from the Department of Public Health and the town. But it's, other districts have asked them. It'll cost $5,000. They have, the drive-in holds 900 cars. So obviously, the first question is, they don't have permission to do that. They're just basically giving estimates of what it would cost if they were given permission. My concerns with that, and you know, we, we're, everything's on the table at this point. My concerns were for all the families that don't necessarily have transportation, we'd have to figure that out because they couldn't be there without a car. The other concern is people, depending on how long the ceremony is, people would have to use the restrooms. And that's currently not something that's happening in restaurants. Everyone's only doing takeout. So there's that whole thing. And then the fact that they don't actually have permission to do it yet made me a little nervous to bank on that, knowing it, you know, what if the Department of Public Health pulls it at the last minute? Well, we did look into it.
Okay.
Any other comments, discussion on year-end plans? Katina?
I, my 92-year-old mother-in-law who lives right here with us, and that's why I stood up a minute ago. She came to offer me wine. Imagine that.
Smart lady.
She's asked me to send a recommendation to the high school principal. And I did and copied Dr. Youngberg saying she would like to see all the pictures of the kids who are graduating in that electronic board that we have in town. So that's another idea that is being considered.
We did get the, we did get the file of all the, all the seniors, you know, from the yearbook, the pictures that they take. So we do have them now. So we just need to work that out with the town.
Great. Okay, well, to be continued. So the next item for discussion, and I don't think it will really be a long discussion, is that the, it's concerning the appointment of the Wyndham Board of Education members to the Personnel Search Committee for the Position of Superintendent of Schools. And just for the, the general public who's watching this, when we offered Dr. Youngberg the position of Acting Superintendent, that ends on June 30th of this year. And the board needs to move forward and make some decisions regarding how we're going to deal with permanently filling the superintendent position come July 1st of this year. So one of the things, we've been exploring what our options are, consulting with legal counsel regarding sort of how to do this correctly. And getting into this COVID surreal world, COVID-19 surreal world, sort of throws yet another, another wrench into the whole process. But our intention is to move forward and take action on this this evening. Is there anybody on the board? I mean, I don't really think we need to have discussion on this, much discussion on this. But is there anybody on the board who wants to say anything?
I would like to make a motion, but I, should I wait until the?
You have to wait till action items.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Action items is when we would take action. Any, any discussion, anything from the board? Okay. So now we're going to move on to action items. Proposed approval of the revised Wyndham High School ed specs. Wow, that's all up here. We got a document from, I know that Janet Testa worked very hard to put the document with the changes together for us before today's meeting. I don't know how, how we want to open this up, but for, you know, at least an explanation. And we probably need to have a motion on the floor to discuss, so.
I move that we accept the updated educational specifications for the Wyndham High School renovation. That's Mary.
Which has been made by Mary Galucci. Do I get a second on that? Katina, you made us, you seconded it? Okay. Now we'll open it up for discussion. And do we, is there somebody prepared to give us an overview of what this is? Dr. Youngberg?
Sure, I can.
I see Mike Callahan here too.
Right, I invited Mike in case there were questions. I can just let you know that, first of all, as you I can just let you know that, first of all, as you said, thank you to Janet for doing all the revision work. On the majority of the updates that you'll see had to do with bringing the document up to speed in terms of the latest demographic data, personnel data. The revisions that I made dealt with whether the educational descriptions were accurate with the new high school pathways. And then there are also some updates in terms of how they've reconfigured the plan to give the high school more of a presence. A lot of work going on behind the scenes. I think the plan is much closer to what the the high school team was envisioning when when they started. So they're they're very happy with where we are right now. I know Mike's on the call if you have specific questions. But I feel like we're in good shape in terms of the plan really represents what it was we were hoping to accomplish. And Tracy's on the call also, and I so is Mary, and they're members of the Renovators New Committee, so.
Anybody have any questions or Tracy, Mary, or Mike Callahan? Is there anything you want to say about this?
This is Mike Callahan. The only comment that I would make is I would want to make sure that the Board of Ed, and they should because we've talked it that the there's not going to be a central office addition to the school. But instead, the central office is going to be located in the footprint of the nautatorium or the old pool. That was a a request, not a request, but in deep discussions with the state of Connecticut and trying to stay within budget. And and probably most importantly, as Dr. Youngberg said, is to give the high school a stronger presence on the first floor. It really did make sense to use that space in the pool as opposed to adding a more new construction for those offices. But otherwise, Dr. Youngberg, I think, captured the essence of the changes. They really are just, again, another final alignment of the plans put forward by the architect and the and the educational requirements. And then just one last thing, we do have a a meeting with the state of Connecticut in the first week or two of May. And we feel very strongly that having the the Board of Ed act on these latest ed specs will just give us a firmer hand when we meet with them.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Just as long as central office isn't underwater when all is said and done. Does does anybody else on the board have any questions or comments? Because we do have people here who can answer your questions if you need them answered. It seemed pretty clear to me what was presented to us. So seeing no hands, I'll I'll and I will call the vote on this. And so Brendan, I'm going to hand it over to you to do that.
Thank you. Dr. Galucci?
Aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen?
So, aye.
Ms. Donak?
Aye.
Mr. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Ms. Ray?
Aye.
Ms. Haney?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye. So it's unanimous. So for the building committee, folks, you've got you've got the board's approval on this. And we wish you, we thank you for all your work. And we wish you the best when you go to your meeting for your meeting with the state, which I'm assuming won't be in person. Probably a virtual meeting, but we wish you the best in the first couple of weeks of May. And I know you'll keep us posted. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will keep you posted. And again, thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you again, Mike.
Okay, the next item for action on the agenda is proposed approval of budget transfers. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
Who was that? Paula? It was Paula?
Yeah.
Who seconded? Seconded by Mark. Any discussion of the budget transfers? Mark, is there anything you want to say about that or Rita? They're pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any questions for Mark or Rita then? Okay, I'm going to call a vote on it then. Brendan, I'm handing it back over to you.
If I remember to unmute myself. Dr. Galucci?
Aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Aye.
Ms. Donak?
Aye.
Mr. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Ray?
Aye.
Ms. Haney?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
There you go.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And then the last item on the agenda for action is the possible action concerning the appointment of the Wyndham Board of Education members to the Personnel Search Committee for the Position of Superintendent of Schools. And I know that Katina is prepared to put a motion on the floor.
Yes. I move a motion to appoint the following Wyndham Board of Education members. Mark Doyle, Lisa Donak, Tracy Leffert, Elda Rae, Jaime Gomez, Mary Galucci, Paula Haney, Lynn Hyde, Katina Caban Owen, to the Personnel Search Committee whose sole purpose is to recommend a candidate or candidates for the executive level employment position of Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Motion made by Katina, seconded is that by Lisa?
Tracy Lambert.
Oh, Tracy. Okay, thank you. And any discussion?
I have a question regarding.
Yes.
You know, it says that for the purpose of recommending, who do we recommend to? We are the board. We all belong to to the search committee. We will be recommending to who?
We'd be we'd be the we'd be this Personnel Search Committee. And then we'd have to come back with recommendations. And any action that we take on this would have to be done in public and by the Board of Ed. So it would be basically recommending to the Board of Ed to take public action.
So the Personnel Committee would recommend it to the Board of Education, and the Board of Education is the only one who can take action.
Right, right.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call a roll call vote on that.
All right, Dr. Galucci?
Aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Aye.
Ms. Donak?
Aye.
Mr. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Ms. Ray? Ms. Ray?
Aye.
Ms. Haney?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye. So that concludes the what's on the agenda. The next item is for the board to convene into a non-meeting as the Personnel Search Committee for the Position of Superintendent of Schools. And we have a motion to do that from Katina.
I move a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting and convene into a non-meeting as the Personnel Search Committee for the Position of Superintendent of Schools.
Second, Tracy Lambert.
That motion made by Katina, seconded by Tracy. Any discussion before I call a vote? Okay, so once we do that, well, before we do the roll call, once we do that, we will suspend the Zoom meeting and the Personnel Search Committee will convene via a call. And the number has been sent to each of you to call in. And then we'll come back in. Brendan will be waiting for us. And we'll end the we'll adjourn the board meeting. So we can do a call, we can do a roll call vote, and then we'll end the Zoom meeting and go into our conference call.
All right, Dr. Galucci?
Aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Aye.
Ms. Donak?
Aye.
Mr. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Ms. Ray?
Aye.
Ms. Haney?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye. So we will be ending this Zoom meeting or suspending this Zoom meeting and going on to the call. And I want to thank all the staff and the members of the public who are on this on this in this meeting. You're welcome to go home.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Oh.
Good night.
Brendan going to send us another Zoom number or he will reactivate this one?
This will be open and we just we'd have to go back and click on the link and go back in after.
Correct, correct. This meeting will still technically be in progress. Just everyone will have left it except probably me. And then once you guys formally adjourn, then we'll end it, but just the same link to get back in.
I thank you.
Okay. Good night, everybody. And the Personnel Committee will call into the number I sent you, please.
Thank you.
You have to leave this meeting.
Yeah. Hey, Brendan?
Yes.
So are you going to stay on? Can I get off? Will you finish up the meeting and just send that to me, the time that they adjourn? And if they I don't assume they're going to take any action, so.
Yep.
But if they decide to take any action or there's other things that need to be reported, just text me and I'll get back on.
Okay.
Thanks.
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 Miguel is not here. Hey, Brendan.
Hey, how are you? Just FYI, this is still being recorded, so.
Yeah, Miguel said he's in here.
He is.
I don't see him in here at all. I'm muting myself, Brendan, because I'm talking to Miguel. So anyway, tomorrow. Okay. Brendan, where are you? Brendan, are you still here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, I was just checking.
Yeah, no, I just kind of went into hiding for a minute.
All right, so I'm going back and hide, and I'm like, nobody's here. Let me check and see if I should hang up. All right, so I'm going back and finishing some work up then.
Okay.
All right, you will let us know when it comes back?
As long as you have your audio on, I'm sure I will hear people speak as soon as.
Oh, so I'll leave my audio on?
Well, you can mute, you can mute your, you can mute your mic, but just listen. And even in the background, listen.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that was happening. Okay, all right.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Hello.
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 People should be coming back in.
Okay.
They're taking a bathroom break.
Hello.
Okay, hello, so we have Paula, Mary, Tracy, Mark. Me.
I'm here, Paula.
Elda's here, Paula's here, Katina's here. Great, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So we're just missing Jaime and Lisa at this point.
So Lynn, Janet had asked me to text you if there's going to be anything more than just adjournment. Do you need to text her?
It's just going to be adjournment.
Okay.
Well, we have a quorum, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Jaime, you're here, great. Jaime's here.
I'd like to make a motion.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, there's no video, just voice.
Tracy, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at whatever time it is right now.
Second.
Eight fifty-three. Motion's made by Tracy Lambert, seconded by Mark Doyle, to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-three. Do we need to take a roll call, Brendan?
I don't think we need you for adjournment.
We can just adjourn the meeting.
That's adjourned.
Bye.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.